It's $40,000 on concrete work in the Public Works Building, which if you guys want to go over there, look over there. I feel we could put that off. Christine made a comment about 350,000 for the wall, the curtain. $80,000 for the locker room in the PD Department. Cut. The light tower that we put in the budget, cut.
How much was that?
What?
How much? I think that was 19,000, but I'm-
For what?
The light tower?
9,000.
9,000.
Decorative lights that we said we were going to do, push, come shove, 240,000 dollars you could cut out of the IP. Comes out to 719,000 dollars. I agree with some of Christine's cut that she's referring to. I agree on... I agree in eliminating everything on engineer. I don't agree on taking any safety issues out of this budget. Safety programs or any police or crossing guards in a lap. The training, you said you want exile of Public Works, I believe? The last, your Public Works Vehicle Maintenance, you want to take the training out of there? Is that what you made that statement?
I concurred with the 2,000 dollar reduction.
Okay. My question to anyone up here in staff, the training conferences or the training courses, is that a requirement? Are these requirement training that we are reductioning, that we have to hold certificates for to maintain our accreditation for any police officers or anything like that?
Some of those will impact the training that we need to do to continue our Kalia accreditation. And the chief has indicated that we might have to scramble a little bit to keep that going along.
Okay. Hold off. I don't suggest we cut that at all.
The... Some of the training and administration will impact my ability to keep my designation as an ICMA credentialed manager. But, you know, can we live without that if we have to? I mean, it won't mean that I can't continue as a city manager. I just lose my credentialing. The other ones, I'd have to, again, I'm going to, Alderman Wesley, I'm going to defer to the individual department heads. I asked them to scrub where they could, and they said, "This is what we can do without. This is what we need to keep."
Okay. Mayor, may I ask some of the department heads the question?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. We'll start out with John. If we hack that...
Mr. Kramer?
Kramer, I'm sorry.
And I think it's cut, not hack.
Well, if we cut that, how does that hold their license for vehicle maintenance? Continue ahead.
We have two ASCs, excuse me, one senior master certified ASE technician and one ASE technician in training. Basically, that equates to, they have 12 ASE certifications between the two of them. They must complete a certain amount of continuing education within three years. Both of them are about at the year and a half mark now. So for them to, one has eight classes to take, the other one has four. Those classes are $50 each respectively, and it costs you $50 each time you go in and make your appointment to take the test. So it's basically $100 a class. I left $1,200, basically is that number, and I put in an extra amount in case someone wanted to take an additional class. So that's how I came up with that dollar figure. So if we took that portion out any more than the 1,700 revised number, ultimately, they would not be able to keep up their current ASE certifications because they would, they only test twice a year. So if they fell out before the end of next budget year and could not test because there was not enough funds, then they would have to start over on testing, take those, of those 12 tests completely all over again, resubmitting, re-going through those $50 and $100 charges yet again.
Okay. So I suggest we don't touch that because we want to keep the certification. Mr. Force.
The, if you go to that page, the $1,700 that's-
Is going to cover it.
Is going to cover it. We could cut the 2,000. The 1,700 still covers the certification.
That's fine. Mr. John Force, same question.
Oh, wait a minute. I want to talk to Mr. Kramer.
Oh.
Can I?
Oh, sure.
Are we going to be able to put this in one coherent motion?
No.
Or do you want to segment this into several motions? You're kind of, you're covering the whole budget here in one statement.
We haven't even gone through this book yet. We haven't gone through this yet.
We have not.
We don't have to.
I think we are trying to give staff some direction.
Well, we just had, we just had the Finance Chairman rat off all these courses that may want to be cut. I don't see why we can't have the answers of-
You can. I'm just asking you, when you're done, are you going to be able to form one motion?
Probably not.
Okay. So then let's segment it, and let's do it piece by piece. Those first group of things you went through, the major cuts on the capital projects, do you want to handle that as one motion?
No. Yes. I'll make the motion that we cut those projects.
Which was, if I understood you, is 40,000 out of Public Works, 350, 350,000 the curtain wall. What was the 80,000?
8,000 is police locker room. 9,000 is tower light. 240,000 is for decorated lights, which comes out to 719,000.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Now, on the question. Alderman, please.
Personally, I mean, I agree with some of the cuts that Alderman Winger had, some that Alderman Wesley had, some things I think, you know, I don't recall them all. If we're going to just rat all this stuff off and vote without going through the book, I'll tell you right now, I'm a no. I want to go through the book. And department by department, we can make the cuts. We have this outline. Basically, we have 500 and some odd thousand. Christine, I think, brought it down to 374. It may come up when we're going through it, but I'd rather go through the book. It sounds like we're making a motion to accept the whole thing with some cuts, and I don't feel comfortable with that.
Just to clarify, this would be a direction to staff to amend the book as presented. We would still go through the normal budget hearing process. But a direction to make these cuts in the proposed budget. You still have final say-
All the questions, Mayor.
You have still a final say on the budget, and we would still go through it as our, as we do traditionally. Question was called. Is there a second to calling the question? No, that fails. Alderman Wesley.
So we're going to go through this 223-page book here, plus these cuts that Lally suggested. Correct?
No.
Refer what you're saying.
We would still have the Budget Committee hearings. Tonight, is there a direction to staff to amend the budget? Are there things that you want to cut based on the economic circumstances that we face?
From the sheet only? Or from the budget itself?
That's where I thought we were starting with, but then that motion failed. So then we had an amended motion on the floor that went into capital projects.
Because there's cuts that I want to do in this book, too.
Understood. And that will come back before you.
You didn't answer my question.
I'm trying to. It is very confusing the way this developed.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure here because, you know, we're number five on the list here to get paid from the state of Illinois. First comes Medicare, then comes schools and so forth. So we're at the bottom of the list here. Well, it's not saying that the state, the state's not going to connect into our sales tax later on, too. We don't know if that's going to happen. Healthcare just passed here. States are going to have to pay for that in, what, three, four more years? I don't know what year that goes in effect.
14.
2014, then. Don't you think that the state legislators are going to look at that? We're $13 billion in debt. They said down there that state of Illinois is going to be going up, foreclosures are going to go up 22% more. So just keep in mind, when we're looking at all this, just think that we're not going to get nothing from the state. Don't count on it. Because I don't think they know what they're doing down there. We know that. We've gone through that. So look at the foreclosures. Look at healthcare. You got to look at down the future. And I want to start going through this book, and let's get this done.
To clarify, the motion on the floor is to make 790,000 dollars in cuts in the proposed, 719, thank you, in the proposed budget. It's moved and seconded. Alderman Coles.
I got, I got one question. And you could, you got down here for gypsy moth spraying. You know what a gypsy moth does to an oak tree? Takes all the leaves off, and that oak tree has a tendency to die. And what are we talking about? What, we're a city, a tree city. And if you want to see some dead trees from gypsy moth, go over to by Lake Street and Wooddale Road, and you'll see a whole stack of them that are dead. And after two years without having any spraying, you ain't going to have any oak trees in this town. So you got proposal of scratching it. Now, I almost fainted when I saw this. Because we've been trying to keep gypsy moth out of this area. We had it up on the north side here. They sprayed. We had it on the south side. Now, you're going to, you're going to take out $20,000 for gypsy moth spraying out of the budget. And I'll be honest with you. I almost fainted when I saw this. Because I live across the street from Forest Preserve. And we, and there won't be no leaves left on any of oak trees. So you got to take that in consideration now before we do anything.
Alderman Coles.
You may not live by trees, but I do. And they're good for keeping your house nice and cool in the summertime.
Alderman Coles, the current motion on the floor does not cut that. They're dealing strictly with capital projects at the moment.
Well, I, I don't-
This is capital projects only?
Okay. Alderman Shawkey.
Two items. I agree with Alderman Wesley about the capital projects cut. The state is in very poor shape, and we need to go as far as we can. The other question I have, though, before I can vote on that, is what the manager gave us, is this a legal thing? Can we do it that way? Pass the budget as is and do what he's saying here. Can we legally do that?
Before she answers that question, we'll handle that after we handle the first motion.
Will you make sure I have a chance to talk then about it?
Absolutely. We can go to that next.
I seem to get lost down here at times when I raise my hand.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Anything further on the question? Mr. Manager, can you state your understanding of the motion there for the clerk? Or Mr. Wilson?
My understanding is the motion is to cut $40,000 from the capital program for Public Works concrete, $350,000 for the curtain wall at City Hall, $80,000 for police rocker, lockers, $9,000, which is in the operating budget for the tower light for Public Works, and $240,000 in decorative lights, decorative lights in the capital fund for a total of 719,000. 710,000 from the capital fund and $9,000 from the operating fund.
Thank you. Further on the question? Alderman, please.
So if we're cutting all these projects that we're talking about, does that mean this is garbage? We're not even talking about this at all?
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley?
I'm going to be first.
No.
No.
Yes.
Dan, I got, I got one. No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitson?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
All right. That passes.
You have just found, or you've just, you've just fixed 719,000 of the $870,000 hole.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just as, I don't know, I'll say clarification. I hear some people just want to go through option B. Some people want to go through the book. Not trying to steer the meeting here. But we can do both at the same time. You can start in admin, and we can tie in the line items in the admin budget to this document and restore and cut out of here relative to what was proposed. So if you do that, you're actually accomplishing both camps' goals of going through the book and going through option B and cutting or restoring as you go through each operational department or division, if you want to go that way. Instead of throwing it up for grabs, you can go through each one of them, department by department, and accomplish both goals at the same time.
Okay. Alderman Shawkey.
I think we need to stay ahead of the game. I really do. I think if we don't make enough cuts, we're going to be in big trouble in the future. I asked the question about, is this legal? Can we pass the budget with the manager having this authority to place things back in or to hold these things until he has more money?
I'll wait.
Ms. Dixon?
Well, the question is, I understand it, is can you adopt Plan A, which is the complete budget with everything in it, and then recognizing that you have a Plan B, which is a part of Plan A, can you say to the city manager, "Well, we have adopted Plan A, but don't spend Plan B without authorization"?
Right.
It is my opinion that you could adopt Plan A with the reservation that on certain of these items, the city manager must seek addition, seek further approval. But that's going to come anyhow because those things that are in Plan B, for the most part, will either have contracts to let or proposals to make, things of that nature. They will come back to the board again.
Okay. If it is, it is possible to do it this way. The manager, except for the Alderman, on conferences, meetings, the manager has talked to each of the department heads and got their agreement, I believe, on all these cuts, right, that you gave us? That they are possible without destroying the city?
These are the cuts that the department heads have proposed to me.
Okay. As long as they have proposed them to you, and as long as it's legal, I don't understand why we don't adopt this as Plan B in back of Plan A. When we get money in that we don't expect, because we don't expect money, if we do happen to get money, to have the manager come back to us and say, "Okay, I got another $100,000", I would suggest we put this specific item back in and tell the council what he thinks should be done. If the council disagrees, they can. If they agree with him to go with that item, fine. As long as you have the manager's inputs on this, I don't know why we should be interfering with changing anything that the manager said was okay. To be honest with you, I mean, you know, we can micromanage this to a certain extent. And we have to leave the rest of it up to the people who are being paid to make those decisions. So I will make a motion that we do exactly that, that we go with Plan A and Plan B as a backup. In other words, we will not, the instructions to staff will be not to spend any of this money unless we get additional monies that we don't expect. And I think that's enough, isn't it? Does that make the motion?
I'll second that motion.
To clarify and understand what you just did, the existing cuts of 219 are approved. Over and above that, you're recommending that the manager's proposed cuts of 557, 948 be approved in the budget, but the money not expended, pending subsequent authorization by the city council.
I do. And I do because, as you know, we were down in Springfield and heard the state of the state. And it's not good. It's very, very bad. And if we do anything else but this, I think we're deceiving ourselves.
Understood. And the question, Alderman Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, and the question, it was, I have a hard time accepting this because there's safety issues in here. The safety of this community. Crossing guards for our children in this town. You are going to jeopardize the safety if you take, if the money don't come in, you're tacking it out totally. I don't support that. I will never support any safety programs that are being cut in the proposed thing. I think the best way to do is go in here and try to find it. But I am not, I will not support that due to the fact is there's safety issues in here. There's kids crossing guards. There's, there's driving courses for our Public Works guys for reduce our insurance rates for we don't get in wrecks and help them and that. There's too much safety stuff that they cut out here. And I cannot support safety issues in this cuts. If you want to hack everything else but the safety issue, then I'm on board with. But the safety issue in after-kids school program, I cannot support hacking this whole proposal. So even if the money, even if the money comes, if the money comes, we don't even know if the money's going to come to hire these crossing guards for next year, if that's, if you're proposing that. Because if the money don't come, you just propose that this ain't spent for crossing guards. I cannot do that for this community for safety reasons.
I have other Aldermen seeking recognition, so I'll have to come back to you. Alderman Caddella?
Alderman Shawkey, on a large, on a global scale, is absolutely correct. We don't, we don't believe the state of the state is good. We don't have any assurance that it's going to get better. Well, we don't have any assurance that we're not going to get what's owed to us either. We've got a lot of question marks hanging over our heads. And Alderman Shawkey is right. We have to cut what we can to be, to be fiscally responsible towards the current and future citizens of Wooddale. However, I have a hard time approving both the initial budget as well as this Plan B amendment as presented because, well, I do respect staff's decisions. I have two fairly small issues that I have a problem with in here. One of them is what Alderman Coles talked about. I think not spending $20,000 to spray for gypsy moths is probably a mistake, although I'm going to want to eventually tonight hear from John Kramer to find out what does deferring that spraying really do to the lifespan of these trees that we know we have an infestation of. Second, I agree with Alderman Wesley that safety issues should be addressed at a very serious level. Particularly, the one I'm concerned about is the, is the part-time employment through the police department, the crossing guards. Everything else in Plan B as presented to me, while I don't like a lot of it, I feel, you know, I, you know, that if staff is saying that they can, they can find a way to adjust, so be it. Alderman Winger obviously has larger scale concerns than I do, and I have to respect that as well. If we're going to try to get a consensus from everybody up here, we may almost have to go through this line item by line item and see where the majority goes in each one of these. And I don't necessarily want to micromanage it to that level, but I feel I have a responsibility to the community and my constituents for the two things that I speak strongly on, which I just mentioned. So I think we're really close to finding a way to get to where we have to be, but it may be a slow process to get there.
Alderman Wesley?
Okay. We got this thing to cut, to release cuts. Why are we even looking at this, this packet now when we still have 232 pages to go through here? And just keep in mind, every single elected official was, is up here to protect the health, safety, welfare of the citizens. Crossing guards, gypsy moth for our trees because if the trees fall, it could hurt someone. We got to look at those things. That's the first priority, health, safety, welfare of our residents. I just want to keep, one more thing here, too. The reassessment valuation comes up, I think, next year for the property taxes. Does that go on this budget?
Mr. Wilson?
Because we're a year behind.
Correct. Yeah, we just received our property tax levy from the county on Monday. I went down and picked it up Monday morning from the clerk's office, Gary King's office. And that property tax levy, which is based on last year's value, funds the fiscal year that we're, that you have in front of you right now. Because it's always a year behind in the funding of it. So the valuation's from calendar 2010 is going to fund the fiscal year that's in 2011. So I'm not sure when the train will reassessment is, if it's in 2010 or if it's in 2011. It affects the fiscal year, the next calendar year from when the assessment was done.
So it wouldn't affect this budget right here?
Correct.
Okay.
And just informationally, the EAV in the town went up about $2.5 million from last year.
Okay. Okay.
Alderman, please.
I'm lying right now. The way it sounds to me, we passed 700,000 in budget cuts. Now we got a Plan B, another 500,000. We're taking out a million, too. My thing is, I agree, you know, the kids' safety is important, the part-time employment for the crossing guards. You know, if we were going through the book, I would be asking the chief, who is going to be taking over their responsibility? Because the kids might be, I mean, I'm hearing maybe the CSO, maybe an officer. I need to know, are we taking time away from the streets for the officers or the CSOs? They can put it into their time. I'm not sure. The safety of the kids would still be just as good with the CSOs versus a part-time crossing guard, or I'm not sure if there's a part-time deal or whatnot. The other thing, the after-school program. I don't want to cut a, cut a after-school program for the kids. That should be in the budget. We should go through the departments, and as each department comes up, A and B, we can start to decide, okay, yeah, this education and training, out. This conference, out. This conference we need, or training we need. If we're just going to make these blanket ones, I'll tell you right now, I'm going to vote no until we start going through the book. I think we're just, everybody's talking. We're all trying to come up with the big solution, which is great. I'd rather go through the book, and then I'll tell you, okay, yeah, okay.
Alderman Shawkey.
Okay. I can understand what is being talked about here. The crossing guards, even though I'd like to see the crossing guards go to people who are out of jobs right now in Wooddale, or get them to kids instead who, parents probably should be supporting them. But I'll go along with the crossing guards. I'd like to amend my motion to take out the reductions in crossing guards, to take out the reduction in gypsy moth, take out the reduction in social services, and take out the reduction in safety issues. And this reduction, therefore, instead of 550, $7,000, would be 507,000 and 188, 507,188 dollars. That would be allowed if we got more money from the state than we expect. Because again, we don't expect, we can't expect anything. So the more we can hold back, and this is being held back by all the, all the different directors of each department, their own, what they came to the manager with, and we're keeping in the safety issues. I still will, I'll make, amend the motion to leave it at 507,188 dollars at the manager's discretion, though he has to come to the council and get our approval to add any of these things to the budget.
You had me- Is that clear enough? You had me except for the last part. What was the figure you had in there? 507,188 dollars it would come to. Before I call for a second, there's two things I'd like to suggest. Before I call for a second, there's two things I'd like to suggest. On the manager's conference, we're required to do that pursuant to his contract. And IML, I'd like to see funding at 50% for various, the conferences.
Okay, the manager's contract says we have to do it, that's how much, again?
I think that's $4,959. Page one, third item.
The conferences that I need to keep my credentialing, in which you have obligated yourself to fund, is a total of $3,145.
I would suggest we add that and half of the IML expenses.
And the IML expenses are the state conference?
It's a combination of IML, the Springfield Drive Down. I would just suggest we limit the amount of people that can go on a yearly basis to half. So the funding would be $8,500 instead of $17,000.
And who will make the decisions on who goes to these if it's cut?
Hopefully, we will have people that will not choose to go this year.
Okay, so we're talking one-half of 17, again?
Correct.
No, it's more than 3,500. 8,500, okay, let me deduct those two. With those two deductions.
Is there a second?
I think I have a second.
Yes, he did second. He has to just.
Do you agree to the amendment?
I agree.
Anything further on the question?
I have a question.
Alderman Winger?
I just want to state that I'm going to vote no, and it's mainly because I really prefer the budget to be straightforward. I want to see what we budgeted and intend on spending in the budget. You know, it's going to be too hard to go back to a list of what was authorized and that, six, eight months down the road into next year. I'm not going to remember this list, I'm probably going to lose it. This is the budget, this is what's passed at the hearing, so I really want to keep this straightforward. So I am going to vote no. Thank you.
Anything further?
Question?
Roll call.
No question.
Do you have any questions? Alderman Wesley?
So we're cutting, we're leaving the crossing guards in, Gypsy Moss?
Yes.
What else?
Safety issues.
Okay.
And social services.
Okay.
And the manager's contract, and the IML, half, one-half.
Okay. I still, I'm going to agree.
Comes to $500,000.
Okay. I agree with Alderman Christine that we need to go through this book and go through there. Do it that way.
Okay, anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton?
You left.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
All right, that passes. Unless there's anything further, we do need an executive session tonight.
I got a question.
Alderman, please.
So when are we going to go through the book?
Thank you. You missed a vote.
Mr. Douthat?
I would suggest we start next week. I would propose that we go through the police department budget and the public works budget next Thursday. And at the time, we can go through the line items, and we will outline for you, highlight for you, those which have been reduced or cut as part of Plan B. So you'll be able to compare.
So basically, what we spent 45 minutes talking about, next week, we can add and take out from Plan A and Plan B, right?
Right, same as you did last year.
Don't waste the time.
Mr. Wilson?
Just informationally, in case people are keeping a scorecard up there, starting with the surplus that was in the book that we gave to you a number of weeks ago to start with, the elimination of the brush contract, the elimination of the Lakota bills that we've paid this year, the motion that was made to remove the capital projects that presumably we would move to the general fund, and assuming that the half a million dollars that Plan B was put in, assuming that none of that gets spent, you're going to pass a budget with a $1.4 million surplus this year. Just informationally. It's not going to present that way, because Plan B will be in and you might not spend it, but if all that things come to pass, it'll be approximately $1.4 million.
Does that include your report, Alderman Winger?
Just with final comments, that even if we would have, you know, kept Alderman Wesley's motion, or essentially, I guess we did, it's part of it, 718,000, going back to the recommendations, there's essentially a paper loss, a paper reduction in next year's budget noted here. It was, let's see, $75,130. It's because we're going to pay the invoice this year. So there's $75,000 right there. So we add that on to the 718. You go to the back, you defer two vehicles until we know the position of the state, that's another $75,000. And then what we've already cut, the forestry, that's the brush pickup, that's $85,000 right there. You add it all up, and you're at $953,130. I get frustrated, because now we're going back and we're trying to redo and rework and get crafty, and we're so close to a shortfall anyways. Even if you look at the paper loss, it's $953,133. We're almost at that million. And I know that there are some other issues that we have to discuss regarding stabilization, but to now go back and rework and do contingencies, I just, you know, I think we're overcomplicating what is already in place. We already did $150,000 last week.
If your goal was to wipe out that $870,000 hole, you just, you've already done it.
Yes.
Already done it. You're there. And I don't mind at all going through the budget, department by department. I think that's probably a healthy thing to do. But you're not under, I mean, if you, if you cut these capital projects, and if you assume that Plan B is not going to be spent, other than, you know, Gypsy Moss and whatever, you're there. You've got, you've got that hole wiped out. You're okay.
One last comment. Alderman Shawkey?
And we did this without cutting any city services, if I'm not correct, right?
No.
Their citizens are still going to see the same level of city services and performance that they have in the past.
By and large, yes. Other than the brush pickup, which we still need to get our arms around, but by and large, you haven't hit any essential services. We've dipped into, you know, ongoing training and education for our employees, but in terms of what you see on the street, you know, the water still runs, the toilets still flush, we hope the dogs don't bark. But the average, the essential services that the citizen sees on the street are still intact.
Thank you.
Alderman Caddella?
Considering a future situation of Armageddon, which I'm not sure I completely agree with, but we have to remember, some of the things that we just discussed here and pulled out of this year's budget are simply going to be deferred till some point in the future. The curtain, the curtain wall needs to be addressed in some way, shape, or form eventually. Public Works concrete floor needs to be addressed eventually in some way, shape, or form. So we didn't magically make these projects disappear, we got to remember that. Somewhere along the way, they have to come back. Just like we didn't magically make anything better by removing the brush pickup, we have to pick that, that service up in-house somewhere, something's going to suffer. Everything we do is going to have a negative repercussion. Any cut we make is going to have a negative repercussion, maybe some big, maybe some small. We're not, we're, you know, we're not creating magic up here, and we all need to remember that. Something's going to come back and, you know, remind us of a decision we made. It might be a year from now, it might be five years from now. But some of these monies are going to have to be spent eventually. So along with the concept of future maintenance in a, in a new world with less money from the state, we may have some big things to think about, and we may have some permanent losses to contend with as far as levels of service provided. Some things can't be deferred forever, though.
There is no other business, there are no bills to be approved, there are no items to be referred, there are no items for information, only other than a reminder of the Ward Three meeting on Saturday. We do, however, need an executive session on the subject of personnel pursuant to 5ILCS 120/2C1. May I have a motion to go into exec, to recess the city council into executive session?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lewitton?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
No? Alderman Police?
Yes, chips.
Call the city council meeting back into session, roll call, please.
Alderman Lewitton?
Here.
Alderman Shawkey?
Here.
R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Caddella?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Farmer's once again present, Mr. Douthat.
I just want some, before we leave tonight, I need some direction in terms of what, how you want to handle next week's budget meeting. You've got Plan A, you've got Plan B. I would recommend that next week, you deal with the police department and the public works department. And we open up the book to the line item, and we'll.